Yeah, item nine, they gotta get to forty-two.
Yeah, trust me, I wanna get it done as soon as possible. Uh, when I was given the job, uh, depending here in, uh, House Brian, yours is mine, it isn't mine, you guys requested me to run it for the budget. Um, I had a lot of conversation with Ben because I didn't like that he put numbers in there because, uh, he, he had worked two people on each, but they were overworked twenty hours a day, eight dollars an hour, my husband did twenty-four hours a day. Uh, so that eats up some more. So, to give you an exact number, then I have the budget right in front of me. But, the budget that we proposed is the same budget we proposed, that we proposed last year, minus forty-three thousand dollars, uh, forty-three hundred dollars, uh, the, uh, Westford EMA, which I think has swapped that into this budget. You know, the, uh, the ex-chief, he tried to, uh, you know, fix up everything else, they think you need money for it. You know, and it takes money to get stuff working. So, I mean, just, and if you have a, like, put it up with a once, come visit me at the fire station, you have a question, come talk to me. I'm not gonna answer you on Facebook, come talk to me, come talk face to face, let's have a discussion. So, and I dug down with a couple of people from the budget committee, and I dug down with a, um, a little lady that's running for, uh, the Westford's job, because they had questions. You know, it's true, this is fifty-five point eight square meters, there's seven thousand people in here, which is gonna double this, uh, with all the, uh, tourists coming in, make sure. The, uh, so, you wanna make sure that your services are up. We have cross-training, we have firefighters that are going to EMT school, manufacturing home, and just grad, uh, just pass their exams, and now they're firing EMTs, and we have EMTs who are the fire schools. So, we can be cross-trained, and they know that if there's a toll within the town, that if, uh, if it's a structural fire, they can blow whole pieces of apparatus. Last year, four hundred and fifty calls we answered, fifty-two more than we did before. Two hundred and twenty calls. This is the first time I've ever heard a budget and being looked at by other towns to see how we're doing it so they can model themselves out of this. Thirty-one mutual aid for people last year. Can you believe that our emergency went to Stanford to cover dollars? So, we're making progress. We don't have a history of this budget, we're making a history of this budget. Like I've explained before, the people that haven't talked to me, I'm open that we use the budget last year, we use the budget this year, and maybe even next year, so you won't see any increase. For three years on one budget. That's my goal.
Thank you, Chief. You guys, a long way to go here. Are there other questions or comments on item nine? Better be relevant, because we're not gonna get done.
Question. Referendum eleven. Article eleven asks for us four hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. When I asked for a breakdown of what that was called for, I didn't get it. But one of the things I got here is from TOY ME, a full of the French fire apparatuses, for a box of four hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and it clearly says to be paid for on delivery. So, this, what I got is, well, we got more than the entire package being asked for. So, I'm a little confused that, because there won't be, give me that, probably, the national partner.
We're gonna get to that. Other questions or comments on item ten? C nine, item ten, for the town of eleven, the local agency incorporated a sum of fifty thousand dollars, placed in the capital reserve fund for workers to purchase equipment for emergency services department. Are there other comments or questions on item ten? And, to answer the question, reports even asked that currently eighty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, they can pay $7.95 on the open P O six dollar call. Other comments or questions on ten?
Yes, I have a comment, why not? One of the things that was mentioned, I, Miss Taylor, told me, we have eighty-four thousand dollars sitting in that account, why aren't we using that to pay for our fire truck that we're asking for this year? Okay? And so, I, I just wanted to say that, I understand where she comes from, the fire companies, they do their credit, but I, I just wanted to say that, what they needed, I mean, they got it. There was a house down the arm of Centerville, okay? It sits way back in here. They had, they had to go in there several times, okay, for emergency, and they had to wait, and not that it was his job to do, they'd wait for the town to come down, plow, get them in there, and open up there with our ambulance, and have plow crew to feed each of the snows, and get the baby.
These stories, these stories don't help with the story.
I'm sorry, I'll tell you later.
That's nice, I mean, mind you shouldn't.
Yeah.
I know it.
You are really ready to have.
All right, other questions on item ten? Other people don't have time, they got thirty-two questions.
What are we doing here?
We're not here to listen to your stories.
It's not a story, it's an answer.
Other questions or comments on item ten? Okay.
I don't even get great.
Five minutes per question, what was your motion? Five minutes per.
Second. We made sure it's not all on person.
Yep. Five minutes. So, we're just starting to time on item eleven, okay? So, you gotta make your points, for or against, ask a question, no stories, about how long your driveway is.
You know why they need a fire truck, I'm trying to tell them.
Question ten, any comments or question ten? C nine, question eleven, now we can start timing. Shall the town of eleven devote to raise and incorporate annual payment not to exceed ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars for five years for a new fire truck to replace nineteen-eighty-nine FMC pump range unit one for authorized selection to enter through lease purchase agreement with a total cost not to exceed four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars with a term of lease for a dollar buyout at the end of the lease. So, the selectmen out of two to one vote, budget committee out of six to three vote. Other comments or questions on referendum eleven? Yes, sir, back, what is it?
I know, all of a sudden, I come, and I'm getting fire truck. Anybody who loves getting their grand, the state, or, by the way, the, how would you pay for?
Question, did anybody look into getting their grand or any other way to help pay for it? Chief can answer the question with yes or no.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Dave, Dwight.
I think that there have been, I did lose a truck, I did administer safety townspeople a couple of hundred pounds, and, when any truck is used, and always working, it's stronger than anything. The brand truck could pay five hundred thousand for, and, this town, the people are getting old, they need to be young, and then I'm so specific, the number, I'm going to vote. You're next.
Additional questions, answer it back.
Just to reiterate on that, we put the demos, you cannot buy a demo, we have to be specific with the donations. We also built this truck for this town, for the roads, broken conditions, that's what this truck is built for.
A demo is great if you're in the city. Additional comments or questions on eleven? Chris.
I voted no against this, my main reason is, this truck here is like four hundred and fifty thousand. Skip proposed a truck, which he had a fire department committee put the fire truck together, the price for that fire truck was ninety-two, five hundred, but that truck also had a light tower, this truck here doesn't have a light tower. The cost of a light tower was twenty to twenty-five thousand, that was proposed when Skip did it, this truck here has no light tower. So, right now, we're buying a fire truck, a hundred twenty, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars more, two years later, than what we voted on last time. That, that's why I voted no, because I don't think there's budget to put on this truck, really. Like Laura said, we had a meeting, come vote on it. We got there, it wasn't even, no information on the truck. They postponed our meetings, all of us couldn't agree for nothing, following me, it was the same thing, here's a proposal, vote on it. It was split with what, a public we're actually voting on. But I do request the price of what Skip proposed, and it's three ninety to five hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars less than what you guys proposed, and that's why I voted against it.
Other questions or comments on item eleven? Let's vote the young lady right here.
Yes, I say here that three minutes of the budget committee voted no against purchase, Chris has identified himself, given, given those reasons, I would like to hear, uh, from the other two members of the budget committee, why they chose not to.
If they choose to answer, anybody choose to answer?
If they choose to answer.
Yep.
Because there was a higher price than the truck we've been sitting on, which we've gone through with the same thing, basically. Price this year for the truck that we've been bidding on for the last five years, looking at, that we had on that, still three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, this year's price, and you knock off the light tower, they said they didn't want this time, it's about twenty thousand, so that dropped down to three eighty-two, compared to four fifty-four. The only difference in, in the truck was they had a bigger engine, three hundred gallons more water tank, and a bigger pump, which we originally never figured we needed, but we went off with that. Why I voted against it, it was too much money for the same truck.
So, you're saying, you didn't need to bring down the water?
What's that?
You're saying that, in essence, we didn't need a truck, like, oh, three of yours going down for water?
All right, we're gonna, tell you what's going on, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, how big is the pump? How big is the tank? We're, we're just flat out, we're just flat out of minutes, on five minutes.
Okay, then, 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 maybe I can hear, you know, the man with the point.
If they choose.
What they said, by exactly.
Very quickly.
I actually voted for it, I know you asked the people that voted against it, but I voted for it, because it is not the same truck, and I don't really think you can compare apples to oranges.
Item twelve. Shall the town of eleven devote to raise and incorporate the sum of fifty-seven thousand, thirty-eight dollars for the cost of emergency dispatch for the emergency service department and for radio, radio power management? No objections. Any questions on item twelve? Item thirteen, shall the town of eleven devote to raise and incorporate the sum of seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the operation of the highway department? We have split both the selectmen and the budget committee, are there questions or comments on item thirteen? Let's go with Dave.
Actually, we can, uh, hopefully, I just want to one, ask why these highway, and this is the only year, in town, since the election, because it's nineteen years ago. I'd like to know if you want to get a hundred thousand dollars, and do that, after the election.
Other questions about the seven hundred and ninety-three? Yeah, I kind of think you have a whole part to ask, a whole story, but I'm just gonna direct from the base here, I, I thought it was one thing, it was another thing.
Well, my, uh, my, my, my question is, would you come up with eighteen hundred thousand dollars, with an important meeting, take nine hundred thousand dollars, you're supposed to stay in line?
That's supposed to be my budget, this is Tony's.
No, but I vote down the issue.
This is your road commissioner's budget, and as far as any road work, uh, Steve Stewart right here would have approved that, uh, not so much myself, because you've got the oath of honor, report is being done, people are, the reason approved, so, which I did approve of. So, uh, we're going right back to this, right, we started, and right over there. Other questions or comments on item thirteen? Yes, Chris.
I voted against his budget, and I'll tell you why, because as taxpayers, you go watching one tonne of open down the road, they're doing wrong work, they haul one tonne at a time to the dump, cool. Doing stuff economically. I'm, I'm not here to campaign when I'm running the road commission, because I'm sick of watching the waste. You see a small snowstorm, you see two one tons riding up down the road, following each other. We were in the stick, the last snowstorm, the road blew, I'm on the river, the road is bad, there's two one tons following each other. They pull over, I pull beside them, the kids sit there waving to me, it's like, don't wave to me, you're wasting my tax money. That's why I voted, because there's more economical ways to do stuff in this town. Tree work, we're spending forty to sixty thousand dollars a year on brush removal, to give guys work.
Point of order, this, uh, Maria, this man just admitted that he's running for that, 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 that position, he's campaigning right now.
I'm not campaigning, I'm explaining where the waste is. I've done this for years, my community resident, you know what I say every year? Every year, we give these guys work, one tons. We do tree removal, brush cut on the sides of the road. I've spent the years, have a tree company come in, we're spending forty to sixty thousand dollars a year on tree removal. Have a tree company come in, twelve hundred dollars a day, they can blow the road out and be done with it. It's, it's a waste of money, we pay like, twenty thousand dollars a year just to haul the firewood that they cut on the side of the road to the dump, they put it up in the bin, we give seven hundred dollars for it. With, if, if you're a homeowner, you're gonna hire a one tonne hauler out to your house, that's what we're doing. You can hire a wheeling to do the same, exact, exact job, but we're not doing that. It's because we're keeping the same guys going every single year. You look what they make, if you want a one tonne, seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year. Who would want that job? You get paid thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars per salary, twenty-year hours. He's been asked to come to the selectmen's meeting, like, go on YouTube, okay? Eleven to selectmen's meeting, eight thirty-one fifteen, write that down, just the whole when you look at that, and you see what accountability our road commissioner has. At that time, he was missing five or six meetings, the selectmen asked him to come in, remember, he's appointed, he's not elected, at the time he was appointed, so, when the selectmen asked him to come in.
Summarize this, since we got a lot of questions on it, we're getting away with our five minutes, so summarize.
Vote no.
All right, thank you. All right, let's go with the, you're gonna get it back there. Don't you, you, okay?
I'm happy on this one.
Run the mile again.
Um, my one complaint on it is, is what, what we do with, with the one tonne or anything, I disagree with that, too, but that's the separation test. My issue with this is, if we have a, a road commissioner that gets a budget like this, that we don't get something for it, that's, that's what I, what I, what my comment is, I think we need to, level there, needs to spend this kind of one of the roads, if not more, as long as it's administered properly, okay?
And the administration's, the separation, as you know, comments or questions, very quickly, Emily.
Uh, just what was the budget last year versus this year?
Come find her.
We're looking for that. Hey, we're gonna go, oops, I'm sorry.
Hi. Here in Massco, I'm not running for road commissioner, so, um, I, I ran some of these numbers this morning, because I, I've been sitting on the budget committee, and this is just, one of those things that just sits me across. Um, ditching, three hundred and thirty hours, if we've gotten our money's worth. Do you think we've gotten our money's worth? Um, personally, I don't think so, for already ten thousand dollars what we're on it. Um, we've got holly, and how many hours do we have? Thirty, so we have about forty hours of, of holly. We've got.
It's gotta be quick, we're five.
Seven, five hours of traveling, um, there are over eighteen thousand dollars on shoulder work, they can, they put three hundred hours in two cold patches, so seven point five weeks in cold patches. A lot of holes in the road. Um, got a hundred and fifty-five hours in overwork, and they've got two hundred and eighty-six point five hours in cutting trees, so seven point twenty-six weeks in cutting trees. Um, I, I agree with Chris, this is radical, there is, there's no accountability, I asked him about that at the budget meeting, said, who, who is the accountable, who is anybody accountable to? You only do a quarter of a mile on my shoulder work, and you've charged eight hours, was that really advantageous for the city, for the town, for Madison? So, um, I'm, I'm against this budget.
Okay. Quickly.
I also vote against the budget, because there is no accountability, and I, um, if you look at, at an appointed road commissioner, it really is probably, the most ideal thing is that they, they produce a five-year plan for the selectmen. And if they don't have that, where is the accountability? And those selectmen on the board can turn that down, and they actually should be pulled in this road commissioner accountable.
Okay, we're gonna move on, we are way over our five minutes. Item fourteen, they just answered real quick, I'm sorry, okay, can I give you the real number of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, four sixty-eight, sixty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars? Item fourteen, shall the town of eleven devote to raise and incorporate the sum of three hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the operation of the eleven transfer station? Split decisions on these things, are there comments or questions on the transfer station? Yes, ma'am?
Oh, it's me again. I, I'd like to, yes, please, the budget committee would like to respond, why do you vote down the budget for the transfer station?
Okay, questions about the negative votes on the transfer station, if anybody wants to, so, I'm jumping at the end first, yes?
Sean Braden, um, I didn't actually get to attend the first meeting for this when they counted. I had to very quickly learn and review meeting minutes to see what was going on. Um, I will say to this, I noticed that the head of the transfer station did not account for anything when it came to payroll issues, couldn't explain why his payroll varied so much. I also asked the selectmen talks about why was it going up so much on waste management costs, over the past four years, we've gone, I believe it's fifty, sixty thousand dollars, it's based off tonnage. I, I, nobody could answer questions as to why, why is it going up without, there was just no response. Uh, so my issue with it was that in fact, nobody's giving a straightforward answer, I wanted an answer. Just upcoming here, I kind of look a little bit more into it, to see if there's a way we can reduce the cost of the transfer station.
Chris? That'd be quick, Chris.
Yep. This is a payroll account, I asked for this as a budget committee member, I asked for a copy of this, I asked for everybody on the budget committee to get a copy of it. I was denied by the selectmen, I paid for this. I went to Zip, uh, Staples, I made copies for everybody to see. I did the same with the wages, wages varied from seventeen hundred bucks a week, to down to like eleven hundred bucks a week. Nobody could figure out why, the department had to blow us because of somebody said somebody comes take their place, while they all make the same up there, so that, that wage issue is the same. I'm, I'm a business owner, so I know, if they're making thirteen bucks now, you're sick, somebody's coming in, taking place, they're making thirteen bucks now, so, the wage issue is the same every single week. We were told that they were twenty hours a week, twenty-one hours a week, so after receiving this pay for a new town, you look at it, some of them are actually working thirty-six hours a week. We were told that there was like four employees, some weeks it's five, five employees up there. So, that's why I voted against the budget, because, like, uh, Sean said, there's no accountability for spending, there's no accountability of hours up there that are capped, and he couldn't even answer our questions on why stuff was the way it was. And when you're hiring relatives, and they're getting thirty-six hours a week, and you tell us they're twenty, something screwed up there.
Okay, question, you got a lady first.
Close last year's budget.
Okay, last year's budget? We're looking it up, other questions? Or, can I, can you use our time?
Um, the head of, uh, transfer station, is it manager, what do they call it?
Dump guy.
Dump guy, that's not, that's not a full in position, or anything.
No.
Why can't you fire him?
Um, this is what we absolutely could do that, but we have.
Okay, because, we, we know, we know, we know, we know our garbage, okay? Uh, it costs something, doesn't go away for free, but, we've seen that go on and on, that's the reason why this town is in the state, except right now, is because one of those guys, okay, as far as I'm concerned, um, that's not a point. Actually, this is the first time we heard it, so, you know, I, I think, you know, that's, that's what I'd like to see, and I don't think we need to be involved, or anything else, so, looking for something that's actually taking our money and dispersing it, um, you know, because I've seen that, so.
Other questions on item fourteen? For Chris, wait, are you ready to hit it? Yes.
Um, if this budget were to not be voted on, would we have coverage to have the dump only be open? Would we refer to last year's budgets, that we don't vote this in, or would we be left without some services, like what happened with the lease settlement?
Question, uh, for the selectmen, so what would happen if this voted down? What do you know?
I'll be there.
Just any question, just call.
Could you, could you look at referendum question forty? That, that will answer your question. So, if, if forty passes, then, uh, if the budget of forty does not pass, you'll have a next year's budget.
Wait, Chris, that's depending on another being passed.
Yes.
So, I'm talking about standing here right now, this one didn't get voted on, whether it's funds payable, keep it up.
It depends on if referendum forty passes, or not.
Depending on another referendum question. So, if that was the answer.
Okay, you got the answer. Okay, question, on the earlier question, but I'll add to it from this year, the last year budget, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one eighty-eight, an increase of twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. Item fifteen, shall the town of eleven devote to raise and incorporate the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand, placed in a capital reserve fund for the purpose of paving town-owned public roads? Split decision on, on the, on the twenty-five budget committee, have any, have any questions on item fifteen? Any questions?
As I said before, you haven't been spending your money, I mean, you're appropriating to the highway department to pay, why you owe one hundred and fifty-five thousand, you just put a genuine one hundred and fifty-four in there?
Other questions or comments on fifteen? Chris?
Um, same thing, why are we, why are we separating this? And I think everybody did, you know, that last year, there was a little bit of money left for the road budget, so we had to make a budget for the end of the year, so we had enough to put, to pay the job up there on Centerville, and then we wrote a budget, like, how much, between the year and the second, still came in, so how much wrote a budget because the auditor is still checking the books? And, according to State Mark, if we wrote a budget on, uh, by that, you're supposed to have a rep, or a public area to vote on spending that extra money, which we have never done. Am I right there?
Okay, thank you. No comments coming on that with Chris anymore? Any other questions on fifteen?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm bad, real quick, I mean, I expected to answer some of those questions a little bit earlier as well, a little further, a little more detail. Uh, last year, I spent forty hours ripping your transfer, uh, highway departments' budgets the previous three years apart, uh, because there was so much confusion, so much wrong accounts, things being built for one tonnage, I mean, I agree with Chris on this one hundred percent, a lot of waste in that part. Uh, you know, so, you've been paying through the note, to a good two to four hundred dollars a double from there a year, not getting anything done in this town, doing busy work, you know, and so this was a strategy, uh, to actually lock up some funds, so that they couldn't be used for one-ton trucks, for all the frivolous things that happens. Uh, so, this would actually be specifically used for paving, so, uh, I know it's not gonna be approved by the select board, whatever board that may be, but it would be specifically for paving.
Very quickly, Ms. Dwight.
My understanding, when we have a cap in this town board, that doesn't fill a fire asshole, and that's what we should be using to decide the road protection and stuff, not something that you can't fill with that in a truck, if you pay to me a thousand, or a hundred thousand.
Okay. Item sixteen, shall the town of eleven devote to raise and incorporate the sum of ten thousand dollars to place in a capital reserve fund for necessary bridge repairs for replacement of town-owned bridges? Uh, we seem to be succinct on this one, no sentences or making votes. Any questions or comments on sixteen? Seventeen, shall the town of eleven devote to raise and incorporate the sum of twenty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and funding no spray contract or main central power? Are there any questions or comments on seventeen? Eighteen, shall the town of eleven devote to pay the selectmen twelve dollars per hour plus expenses? There are three intentions upon the selectmen, are there any questions or comments on eighteen? Nineteen, shall the town of eleven devote to pay the road commissioner, road commissioner three hundred and two thousand dollars salary plus expenses? We have split recommendations here, yes, sir?
Yeah. What did the road commissioner think of last year?
Question is, what would the road commissioner sell last year? That is a question, okay? No change. No change.
Semperita has never been over valid, uh, at least last year in any way, it's an elected position, spoke to him about it.
Also, we're paying you that?
Oh, it's the same, yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
I have the same old question, um, do anybody on the elected committee care to address with each of you, who they've got, who they're actors, who's sending money for a position, um, so, I think you should excuse yourself, Chris, but there are two, three, four, five, six, seven, three, eight other people up here, that can answer the budget, why you vote it up?
Okay, so, the question for the budget committee, if anybody would care to respond as to why they were calling, no, no, anybody here to?
I, I look at what Chris is saying.
That's, I'm trying, I'm just doing.
Oh, yeah, Chris, you're on the budget committee, you've got to be up to it.
I'm running, I voted no for it, because I, I think, as a road commissioner, you should go to the selectmen's meeting, that's what you're paid to do. You should address the issues. You should tell the selectmen, that's the selectmen when he's doing it. They don't even know what's going on in town with the money that was thrown, a million dollars a year. They don't even know where it's going. That's why I voted no. When you drive by a house at two o'clock in the afternoon, and he's working on a contract, instead of watching the road crews. Have you seen guys out there working, eating your ass? That's why I voted no on, even though we're running for the position.
Okay, just your questions on nineteen?
I, I voted no, too, just because, again, of the accountability issue that I really think the selectmen need to hold the accountability. While it is an appointed position, but they still have the ability to hold the purse raised.
Okay, so who's, okay, so we, we know, irrespective of who's going to be the road commissioner, then how do you make him accountable for that thirty-two thousand dollars? You have nothing in position, no ethics policy, no, then how do you fire him?
You ask all of my questions, Tony. Does anybody have an answer to that? How do you make him accountable?
Does likely control the money? What? Does likely control the money? Even if it's an appointed, I mean, no, it's a position. It's paid. And when you have two selectmen that bring in a, a deal to get, make us go over budget that's going to this one year, that's not gonna be crazy, I'm telling you, right?
If you are an employee of the county department, irrespective of your position, and you are derelict in what you're doing, uh, how does that affect? I don't understand this, Charlie. So you're saying that any physician, whether you vote for them or not, you're voting, you're saying, no, we're not gonna pay him. You have to, I don't get that.
Well, we're ranging too far here. This is about thirty-two thousand for a road commissioner.
Well, I'm a huge, and I live in high...
Okay. Let's go, let's get it too broad here. We're going way out to the side. Let's go. Anybody else have any comments? Well, let's go with this young man. Uh, very quickly.
I think the thirty-two thousand that you have to hand to towns in your county is probably wrong. However, this town should take a real, real high look at the one-tonnes that are running around this town. That's the other budgets.
Yeah, I just think maybe, just maybe this one year, you can transform the highway department so that the head of the highway department makes a lot more, not quite a different thirty-two thousand, but does not, uh, does not call on his own truck throughout. So basically, he is already repositioning himself in his own one-tonne. So he's helping his supervisor, and he can dip it into the pot. We need someone who can be a supervisor, and he makes forty-five thousand a year, why not? He's got a million-dollar budget. So who makes a million-dollar budget with thirty, and he can take thirty-two thousand? Well, he's writing, he's doing no truck throughout the work at sixty, seventy dollars. You know, maybe something to transform if people would have part of the highway.
Very quickly, twenty seconds.
Chris, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to ask the same question then. So you knew what I was trying to ask, is that if you don't vote to pay him, it's not our, paying him, it's not our, funding a road commissioner. It, it, another question has to be asked about accountability. It's, so she's, what her question was to you is, do you vote not to pay? Because what if you win the position? What if, sorry, I was saying, what is it? Do we vote not to find a road commissioner, and then come back and renegotiate the salary later? Or do we have to start taking a good look at why we can't have the board that's not holding the road commissioner accountable? That's what she was trying to ask. That's what I...
You ask me?
Yeah.
Right, right.
I said, I always say, because you should be accountable for what you're doing. You should be on the job site, watching what's getting done. If they're ditching, you should be there watching it. Matter of fact, if you're ditching, you should be the one running the machines, because you're, you're the supervisor of the town. If you don't get the thirty-two thousand dollars, and you're using the backhoe, you should be in that machine doing the work. Don't have some kid that gets paid thirteen dollars an hour run that machine. You give them a hundred thousand dollar machine, and you don't get a high run. Give me a break. And me, you're very accountable to the selectmen. We're all the selectmen's meetings are over right here.
We have item twenty. The town eleven votes to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars for government expenses for town office, including elections. Elections weigh the same expenses. There is no disagreement between the budget committee and the selectmen. Questions on item twenty? Thank you. Item twenty-one. Shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars for the operation of the animal control office and expenses? Again, you need to be, please, quickly. Any questions or comments on twenty-one? Twenty-two. Shall the town eleven vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars for the combined department budgets for code enforcement slash health officer slash nine-one-one director, including expenses? We have wide opinions here from the budget committee. Are there questions or comments on item twenty-two? Item twenty-one? Oops, I'm sorry. Chris, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Twenty-two. We're on twenty-two.
Sorry to keep, uh, you guys here. I voted against this. Personally, stuff that's going on with me, with the town, plus other stuff, you, you look at other people that are being called, trying to make appointments, they don't get answered. Me personally, I asked for a, a bill of permit, I was told, I was called by the assistant, told me to make an appointment. I called it the next day, I made an appointment, I went to voicemail, I, I messaged. I didn't answer that call, there was no return to me. I went to the selectmen, I addressed them. That's why I, I, the third time, expect to come to my inspections on my clicks, because I knew I had no answer back on this one. Took me almost two weeks to get a bill of permit for July. I don't know. I voted no, because I think the last guy, I wanted like a nine-hundred dollar raise, it was denied. This one here, it's almost, uh, forty-seven thousand dollars of his salary. I don't agree with it. Plus, yeah, we go full-time with him, we're gonna give him benefits, which is, what? Twelve thousand dollars to beat him family's stuff? So it isn't just what's here, you got basic insurance and stuff. That's why I voted no.
Other questions on item twenty-three, or, excuse me, twenty-two?
I actually have, uh, just one thing to say. Uh, I don't really know the, our code enforcement officer. They, uh, I know a little bit about him, and, uh, I just try to say that a lot of the problems that people are having with him is that he has to have certification. He is working so hard to go to school, and he's got, and I don't know what code enforcement officers get, or what they don't get. I'm just asking him to give a little bit of thought, if he can, and everybody can't answer it. This guy works real, real hard, and he's got all this certification, and he's been doing a really good job, yeah, just by...
Other comments or questions on item twenty-three? Be none, item, excuse me, that's twenty-two. Uh, so now we're going to twenty-three. Okay? So the town eleven votes to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars, placing a capital reserve fund for the purpose of contributing to a large-scale pyramid building or ground, only, only ten thousand dollars in terms of... Slight divide here on the recommendation. Other comments or comments on item twenty-three? I'm sorry, Chris?
I get sick of standing. I voted against this. Last year, we had the same question, and I voted for it. So, my understanding as a budget committee member is, uh, building town has to have ten thousand dollars worth of work to come out of this thing. So the town hall, they paid it, like, get the cost, maybe the selectmen can tell you, I think it was like seven thousand dollars. Then they decided they want to take the wall down, which is like, no, three, four thousand dollars. None of this money was taken out of this fund that we worked on last year to do these problems. They were taking it out of maintenance from the buildings and something. So we still have ten thousand dollars in there. The answer they gave is, no, no, you probably spent more than ten thousand dollars to take the money out. What kind of stupid thing is that? You're gonna, if you need the house payment, you're gonna wait until you get X number of money before you do it. You're gonna do it, with the money you have. That's why I voted no against this, because it doesn't, no sense to me. You're gonna wait till the, the problems, you owe ten thousand dollars, and you're gonna spend it, instead of spending it while what you needed at the time. I voted no on that one.
Other comments or questions on item twenty-three?
I'd like to know that, um, if that money, like, roll, if that money will begin to spend it.
Question on the town?
I thought it was, I thought the original intention of that was to put the town old town hall, and it's still sitting there, and still...
Question on the town reserve fund? And specifically, the state of last year was not going to be used for the old town hall when asked in the same form as this. Uh, it is a CIP fund, so that's all.
So how much is in there?
Ten thousand.
But they'll ask you with the first year?
And so, there's questions to start, and you have, you have, uh, pavement that's going to be replaced, you know, the town office. Uh, there's all kinds of different things like that. So it's, but as far as staying the building, we ran into problems as far as staying on the building, it had been water sealed, so it wasn't as easy as you would, uh, the bidders had come in and looked at it. We did go, end up going over what we originally had bid on, because of some sort of last opponent, and it had to be completely pressure washed, washed under the gun. So yes, we're going on seventy-eight hundred dollars. That is building maintenance, so thus the reason it comes down to building maintenance fund.